Welcome, everyone. I'm Andrea McKean, Chair of the Wayzetta School Board. I call to order our special meeting for Wayzetta School Board for Tuesday, August 31, 2021. This meeting will be livestreamed on the district YouTube channel, as well as recorded and available to view on the school board page of the district website. All right, could the clerk please call the rolls?
Linda Cole.
Here.
CM Falconer not present. Sarah Johnson.
Here.
Chris McCullough.
Here.
Cheryl Ozin.
Here.
Boe V. Lucky.
Here.
Chase Mandinger.
Here.
Andrea King.
Here.
All right, thanks, Anita. First on our agenda, we have administrative reports and recommendations. Approve membership in the Minnesota State High School League. I'll pass it over to Chase.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. You'll recall most likely that on an annual basis, we bring this resolution to the Board for Board of Social Prior to the beginning of the school year. And we'll share the following background information in terms in regard to membership with the Minnesota State High School League. Minnesota Statute, Section 128(c)(01), requires individual school boards each year to authorize membership in the Minnesota State High School League. The resolution for membership affirms, number one, that the Board of Education delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of league-sponsored athletic and fine arts activities to the Minnesota State High School League; and, two, that the Board of Education adopts the Constitution, bylaws, and rules and regulations of the league; and, three, that the administration four, and the responsibility for supervising the activities are assigned to the official representative. Chris McCullough is the appointed school board representative to the Minnesota State High School League for 2021; and Megan Potter, Activities and Athletic Director, is the Wayzetta High School representative. The enclosed resolution provides for the appropriate school board action. And I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Chase. The recommended action before us is to approve the resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League for the 2021-2022 school year. Is there a motion to approve?
I still move.
Is there a second?
I second and ask that we waive the meeting of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? This is not a roll call vote. All in favor of approving the resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League for the 2021-2022 school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries on. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, under Board Reports, we have Discuss School Board Vacancy Process. And as a reminder, our school board colleague, Sam Falconer, has accepted a new job out of state and has submitted her resignation from the school board as of September 9, 2021. So this agenda item will give us the opportunity to get on the state page with some details, as well as brainstorm some pros and cons of the possible processes we might use to fill the vacant seat. So before we get started, I'll just kind of direct your attention to some of the information around the room. Here we have important upcoming dates. Mainly to point out the fact that we will be making this appointment in the middle of the school board election, so that should really impact our thinking and our decision-making. When we decide on who we'd like to appoint, then that would be a resolution vote, and we could tack that onto any regular meeting, special meeting, or work session. But at the time of that appointment, then 30 days have to pass before that person officially becomes a school board member. And during that time, the public has the opportunity to petition against that selection if they're not happy. 5% of the vote of the last regular election would have to sign that petition, so that would be about 2,800. All right. Another thing to keep in mind is that we have our organizational meeting December 6. It would be nice to have them in place so they could get part of that planning. And also, just to get us on the same page, this one here with school board elections, I just wanted to remind everyone that for this election coming up in November, the seats to be filled are mine, Chris's, and Sarah's. And then whoever is appointed will have to run in a special election in the fall of 2022 to fill that seat. And then the following fall, in November of 2023, there will be four seats open. CM's old seat, whoever fills it. Linda, Cheryl, and Boe V. I put that off on the side, possible things that could be happening at the same time, to kind of keep in mind. So with all that being said, the only other thing I'll mention is I give forward onto you via email a couple of examples of what other school districts are doing at the same time in the same situation. Robbinsdale and who else is it? Minnetoka. Minnetoka. Yep. And so hopefully you had a chance to kind of look those plans over and give that some thought. So it seems as if there are kind of three main processes that school boards use in filling a vacant seat. So I thought it might be helpful to just kind of go through each one and think about it in terms of our situation and come up with pros and cons and think about the timing. So at this point, I'll be quiet and listen and take notes on what you guys say. The first option is to appoint a past school board member. So go ahead and just yell out pros and cons, and I'll write them down. Chris?
Can I ask us to clarify my question?
Of course.
So back on the elections sheet, it says November of 2022.
Yes.
And so that's CM's seat, if you will. So if there's an appointment made that is successful, and that person then steps into the board role, say, in the next 60 days, give or take, next November, if that person chooses not to run, does the November 2022 special election basically become essentially wide open? I mean, it's going to be, it'll be wide open in any event, right? I mean, anybody who wanted to oppose that appointee slash incumbent could. So the November 2022 election could be another 6, 8, 10, 12 candidates.
Could.
And there could be either no incumbent or it could be incumbent.
Exactly. I think that's right. Is that how everyone else understands it?
Yes, that's how I understand it.
Yeah.
I have a question. You said, let's see, that the 30 days to wait is because there could be a petition that and what percentage or what number of people would have to be on that petition to make it? So we have to do something different.
I think it's 5% of the registered voters who voted in the last general election, which was about 56,000. So check my math, please. I think it's about 2,800 signatures. Does that sound right?
Sure.
Is that the last general election or the last school board election?
General.
Okay.
Based on Ashley's research.
Okay.
We could double-check that.
I can read the statute if you want. I can read it out loud. It says, "Petition to reject an appointee must be signed by a number of eligible voters residing in the district equal to at least 5% of the total number of voters voting in the district at the most recent state general election." So that would be 2020, and it would just be a matter of trying to find out how many voters voted in 2020 that are a part of our district. Is that right? Jill?
Yeah. If I could say in 19, I haven't got the numbers yet. In 2019, we had 44,000 registered voters within the district boundaries at that time.
But it sounds like the numbers that I just stated probably aren't accurate.
Maybe the city of Plumbah.
Okay.
I would have to gather that for you. There's eight communities. I'm going to have to gather that.
Okay. So that is up now at this time. Thanks for that clarification.
In the range.
Any other? All right, should we just work our way through the three options and kind of see what we come up with?
Well, why don't you tell us all three? Can you tell us all three options before we start to dig into pros and cons of each?
Good idea. The first one is appoint a past board member, a retired board member, assuming there would be someone who would be willing. The second one is appoint a past candidate. So that would be someone in probably the most recent election against CM. Or we could even look at past elections as well, because the reality is we really can't appoint a member we think would be best for the position. And then the third option is to interview applicants and then appoint them. And I guess in theory, this third option would allow people from Group 1 and Group 2 to apply if they're interested. So those are the three main options that other school districts have used in this situation. We can come up with a fourth and a fifth option if we want to think creatively or if we think we need to do something differently because we're in the middle of a school board election. So that's what that one down there is that says, "Other Ideas."
And Madam Chair, who interviews the applicant? All six people on the board interview applicants?
We would get to design that process however we would like. We can't break open meeting law, so it's likely that if we went in the direction of applicants, we'd probably want to create a committee to do that work and then bring it back to the full board.
Of the districts who are going through this right now, we know of a couple that are going through an application process. Do they also have a board election this fall? No, they are, they do.
Minnetoka.
Minnetoka has a board election this fall.
They are on the.
With incumbents and open seats.
Yep.
And Robbinsdale does not.
Okay. I'm just curious, because that would make a big difference.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I think anyways, it would make a difference.
Yep. I think it makes a difference in terms of community's perception, in terms of timing. So yeah, I think it's important to think about that. And maybe one other thing we should talk about is the statute gives us a lot of flexibility to do it however we'd like. But at the same time, I think it's helpful to talk about precedent and how it's been done in our district in the past. And I don't know if Chase or Jill, could you speak a little bit to that? Or I know the basics, but.
To the appointment team or?
The fact that, yeah, we appointed past board members in the past when we had openings.
And that's before your time starts.
That's okay.
I could just comment on that. So I believe the last time something like this came up was in 2008. A school board member resigned, I think in the summer. I can't remember the exact dates. And the board at the time, or the board chair, reached out to a former school board member who had served a number of years prior to that and selected that person. And I can't remember the process with the board at the time discussing, like we're doing here tonight. But there was probably at least some general discussion at the work session, providing authority to the board chair to reach out to a former school board member who accepted and I think finished the term for a year and a half, perhaps.
Okay.
Well, maybe Linda recalls from that, too? Or does that sound pretty accurate on the way I portrayed it?
That's right. And then he did not run again.
Correct.
He just filled in for the time that was needed and then did not apply.
At that time, it might have been, like you said, a year and a half. But I think the statute has changed that says we have to have a special election in the next November, you know, election day. So we can't appoint somebody who just fill out the rest of the term. And so I'm not sure that that was the case back then. So if it was more than a year, I don't know if that makes a difference or not, but.
The information here does align with the updated statute.
Yep. Yep.
But another option that I didn't mention, because MSBA doesn't recommend it, is that we could just leave the seat open until the November 2022 election in the fall. But nobody really thinks that's a great idea just because then we'd have a board of six and we'd be open for so long. But other boards have chosen to do that. So just to kind of indicate the wide range of options that we do have, so.
Madam Chair, is there any precedent from other districts or in there to consider appointment of so you have appointment of a past candidate or a past board member? What about appointment of an active committee member? So maybe someone that's been on a district-level advisory committee that has a similar to a board member having a higher learning, you know, higher base knowledge? And/or, as we think about candidates, appointment of a community leader that maybe has not, that maybe has worked with the district, but.
Yes, we could be able to do that without going through the interviewing and appointing process. We do have that flexibility. What do people think of that?
Well, I didn't do the pros and cons like we didn't, like we're going to do with all the others.
Right. Yeah, I think it's an interesting idea.
But I didn't hear you.
I said, I think it's an interesting idea.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if we're talking about pros and cons, but one of the pros for me is somebody who understands the district and understands board functioning and so on and could step in and be an active participant, rather than maybe somebody who doesn't have any idea of what the board is doing or whatever, how it's functioning.
I have a question. Maybe Jill would know the answer to this. So Andrea said that we could choose not to fill the position, not to appoint somebody. Is there a time limit under which we would need to appoint or wait until, you know, the November 22 election?
So you need to appoint with a reasonable amount of time. And that is not necessarily set statute, but generally perceived between 30 to 60 days is generally what they recommend in MSBA.
Okay. And CM is technically off the board as of September 10th?
Right.
Right. Okay. So 30 to 60 days from then. So under "other ideas," we could consider appointing after this November's election, and then our pool of past candidates becomes larger?
That is something that's not recommended to do.
Okay.
Because it's not within the, you know, 30, 60-day range of September 11th. They recommend it before the election, and that's against MSBA.
Okay.
Like take that number four or something like that.
Yeah, that's hard on 90 days then, right? The November election is more like 90 days? Okay.
Well, it's less than 90 days, because if it was 90 days or greater, we would have been able to fill it within this general election.
Right.
So I think that it's somewhere between it's greater than 60 and less than 90, which leaves us in this pretty much.
It's not recommended to take the number four or whatever, recommend it before that.
I see.
That particular information, though, does limit our choices to, that we need to, the timing needs to be between now and the election. And if that's the case, I feel like the more space we could have between the appointment and election, I think that that could be better in terms of just the community paying attention to one thing and then another instead of having them overlap. I don't know. I think appointing a past board member and appointing a past candidate, a pro for both of those would be that they could happen kind of quickly.
We know our pool for both of those. We know our pool, and it's limited.
Yeah. And so then I would say maybe a pro for interviewing applicants would be that it's a wide pool of maybe wonderful people we don't even know about.
That's true.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Of course.
Jill, what is, so we have 12 people that really want to be on the school board. So if we were to open up the interview of applicants, what if one of our current candidates says, "I would like to be considered in this pool"? Is that allowable for them?
It would still be on the ballot in November. It's an interesting question. Let me see if I can research and figure that out. I don't know the answer. I mean, I don't think being on the ballot would disqualify you from the appointment, but.
And there's probably the statute, and then there's probably precedent, right? And/or just best practice related to that. But I wonder if we were to open up an interview process, if we would need to be prepared to have a decision on that.
I think it's really important that Jill does look to see if there are recommendations out there. But if they are recommendations, and generally MSBA has a lot more experience because they see the whole state, if you will. But from my, from my read of the statute, there is a lot of discretion given to the board to appoint a new board member for the vacancy. So I do think it would be really interesting to know what MSBA has to say. And I'm not suggesting that we would deviate from it. But going back to the statute, we've got a lot of flexibility, and I think it's for all the right reasons because, you know, we want the ability to make a well-informed but a reasonably quick decision. And so maybe that's why if there is some recommendation against waiting, you know, a certain period of time, that may be because of that.
I'm not sure that I think the small pool is a con.
Okay.
I mean, because in a way, I just think that the expediency and so on. So when you put up as a con the appointing of past board member, I see that as a pro.
Well, I have, we know our pool as a pro. And if I'm thinking that I like the idea, I'm just saying hypothetically, of the idea that we have so many, a wider pool of choices and people we might not even know about is a large pool, as a pro for the empty interview applicant, I could vote.
Let's do that.
Sure. It really is a.
It could be a pro.
You can see both sides. Why it would be good or not.
Yep.
I wonder about the perception if we were to, oh, choose one of the current candidates if they were allowed. I'm sure they would be. I mean, I can't imagine why they'd be excluded. But if they were part of a pool of applicants and we chose one, does that take that decision away from the community? I mean, I guess technically it's our choice to fill this empty seat. But because everybody's looking at the election already as a pool of candidates, would the perception be that we sort of usurped the community's voice? I don't know. I'm just wondering about that.
Because, yeah, this is happening in the middle of the school board election.
Yeah.
I think unfortunately, that's going to be a con of whatever we choose to do.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to be hard.
So what you're pitching out there as a possible idea is there are 12 candidates, and we as a board just pick one to appoint through a process, maybe through an appoint, or through a.
No.
Okay.
No, I wasn't pitching that. I was just saying, if the candidates wanted to apply, if we went through an application process.
If we waited until after the results of the November election?
No, no.
Okay.
I'm just saying, say we choose to do applications.
Okay.
The candidates may want to apply because they'd rather be appointed than be on the board than to wait for their election.
They want two shots at it.
Well, if you were running, maybe people think that way. So I'm just saying, if they were part of the pool of applicants and we chose one of them, would the community think that we were sort of taking that choice away from them at the election? I don't, I don't know.
What if that person then goes on to win?
The next year? Oh, you mean this year?
This year.
Yeah. Yeah.
Then it's a mess.
Well, they'd be on, yeah, well, they're on the ballot because we can't take their name off the ballot.
We can't take their name off, right?
So if they were one of the winners, then they wouldn't be able to accept that seat. Then they'd have this seat in which they would have to run the next year to win it again. So they, they may not want to accept this seat, but if they've already accepted it, then they would have that, and then they would fall off, imagining, fall off, and then you'd go to the next person with winning votes in the election.
My list of cons for that scenario is really long.
It's really, it could be a mess.
I think it's a mess. Yeah, because when you do, you go on to the fourth highest vote getter. I mean, is that person like, yeah, I don't have the answer.
That's another idea. But you don't like it.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't know.
I think, here's a question is, based on what you just said, aside from public perception, is it just a conflict of interest on our part to put someone into a seat? Like, put them into a position where they have to run again next year, where maybe they wouldn't have had to?
Right. If they would have lost. So it could be very messy. But so that, to me, is kind of a con for interviewing applicants because you don't want to exclude anybody. But if they're candidates, it may be beneficial to them to apply, or it may not be. So it just, it really gets messy.
I almost think.
The candidates. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I would almost think that in an effort to avoid that messiness, then if we wanted to open up the application and application process for those candidates that didn't get elected in November, we would have to initiate that process after the results of the November election, which might be an MSBA, you know, not.
Well, right, because it's after the 60 days that we should have already appointed someone.
If that 60 days is hard and fast, I don't, I don't think. The statute doesn't say. I don't believe.
So I'm going to put under timing, open applications, November 3rd question. So we think about that.
Well, I think, I think you were rooting to, if they did it before the election, that people, if we opened it up to applicant, applications, that people who are running could choose to apply to this position, is that, that we weren't waiting till the end of the, I mean, to find out what happened in the elections. But I, to me, that is extremely messy. And also, if a couple candidates decide they want to, would want to be in that process, and others didn't realize that they could be, I could see us getting a lot of heat about, "Well, you didn't tell me as a candidate I could be another candidate." I mean, I don't, it's just.
It seems like Andrea said, so an interview applicant, if we did an interview applicants, I think we would have to engage in a conversation about when that process would happen because it seems like there's a lot of confusion or liabilities about having an open application process when we currently have 12 people applying to our community to be on the school board. So it would not feel right to say candidates cannot apply.
Right.
Yet, it would also feel not so great to not allow them to apply. So I think, I would say that if we were going to, if we were considering an interviewing applicants, that I would say, yes, we might need to, because none of this is a perfect situation, and there's, you know, lots of opportunities and positives, but quite a number of negatives, too. But I, too, would say if we were going to have an open application process, that we would need to consider postponing our appointment until after the election so that any candidate that is currently applying to be a board member would continue to have that opportunity to try again at that moment. But that will lead us, leave us without a sitting board member for 90, you know, for definitely 90 days from now because it would be, we'd have that process. So we really would have almost the rest of 2021, probably.
It would probably be closer to five months because we have to start the application process. And if you look at like Minnetoka's application process, it takes a while.
Right.
To get the applications, review the applications, do the interviews. So that's worth thinking about as well.
Right.
It feels like if we went down that route, that we could. that we could begin to publicize that this application process would happen on November 3rd.
Yep.
So unlike Minnetoka that might be taking some, I shouldn't say it, unlike a district that might be taking some time to let people know the application window was open, the community would know for a while now that the application was open. And so maybe our application window could be shortened because people would know relatively soon that it's gonna open then. But it's still, yes, it probably would mean that the entire 2021 would be without a a seventh board member.
Amy, can we ask you, do you have kind of thoughts from from your lens about the timing of that kind of an application process? Are there are there best practices or can we really decide how we want to do it?
I really am sorry, I can't speak to it.
Okay.
I haven't been in a district where we've been facing this, but I do feel strongly about the precedent piece that you and we have mentioned to really consider that. Because when you look at Minnetoka's website, they say something to the effect that they've used a similar process since 1970 when this happens. And I don't think it's happened that often for them either. But I think we really need to think that that piece through moving forward.
Can I?
You spell precedent, please.
P R. P R E.
That's all.
C.
C E.
C E D E N T.
Okay. Thank you. Shouldn't it have always been a process?
Yes. So can I? Okay. I want to build on something that Amy said. Are we in the opinion sharing phase or are we still in the fact gathering stage? Because I would, I have an opinion on this, but I don't know if we're sharing opinions yet.
I think, thank you for asking that. I probably should have said at the beginning that I would really like this to be wide open, brainstorming. Doesn't have to even be feasible. If you think of something, someone might build on it. I don't know how far we can get in the next 20 minutes or so, but I would like at the end to go around and maybe take temperatures. But at the same time, Chris, if you have an opinion, I think we can, I think we can be, let's just, let's just be flexible and go for it.
So throw my cards on the table?
Go for it, sure.
So. I went back and read the resolution that we used last time to appoint a former board member. And one of the things that caught my eye was that there was an urgent need to replace the outgoing or the resigning board member. And the board at that time, and I was not on the card, so Linda, if you remember this differently, let me know. But there was a recognition at that time that because of other changes in district leadership, there would be an advantage to having a former board member come in who had some institutional knowledge, some experience, et cetera. So that was at least in the paragraph long resolution that the vice chair wrote up at that time. There was a recognition of of that, which I think is the same today.
Yeah.
So precedent, similar situation. I think we've all acknowledged the the pros with having a past, reaching out, potentially reaching out to a past board member. And and certainly, it's it's possibly fairly quick. Right? So I like that approach. We've done it before. I don't know historically if we've done number two, where we've appointed a a past candidate. I could get my head around that too. I mean, those are people that tried really hard, were very passionate about being on the board, missed out by in some cases, you know, dozens of votes or whatever, of of, you know, a smallish number. They've never served on the board. They may be on committees now, I don't really know. But there's a passion there, so I I could see that being a possibility. I'm I'm worried about kind of the urgency. I guess I'm I'm worried about doing something fairly quickly. As we can see, CN's got a lot of important roles. We've got several changes in the district. Even though it seems a little undemocratic in the sense to not open it up and have a longer appointment interview process, I I'm not sure that we really have too much luxury of time. And I do think we have options available that are more, can be accomplished.
Just to follow up on what Chris says, which I agree totally. It seems to me that we're not being undemocratic in that anybody who wanted to run for the school board has had the opportunity to run by now. So that if if we choose a past board member or whatever, we haven't negated anybody's opportunity to run for the school board because of the timing. So so it doesn't seem to be undemocratic.
So I probably. I've probably got a couple of thoughts. When I think about a past board member, I like what Chris says that we've done it before. When I think about a con that's faced is do you even have a person you may call and say, oh, interested? Everybody who ever's been a past board member would say, yep, no, I've done it, really have done that. So the con of that is that, yep, no, I'm not interested in doing it. I think a con, but possibly, and I don't know all the past board members, do we have any diversity with the past board members? When I think about past, you know, candidates in training, we have a very pool of diverse candidates that would put the possibility for, when we look at overall, when we talk to Dr. Anderson about equity and diversity, a part of our goal should be also looking at opportunities that are also.
The only thing I was gonna add to what Chris and Linda were saying is appointing a past board member is less, less democratic because they were chosen by the community originally. We're not picking somebody that was never chosen by the community. So I totally agree about the who would candidates lacking diversity in past boards. And so that is a con that who would really have the ability to appoint somebody. I guess it is the temporary fill in till the next November, at which time there is a special election that opens the way up. So that possibility then opens up. So I guess it's not great, but it's better than nothing.
Kind of makes your head spin a little, doesn't it?
Quiet.
Makes your head spin a little bit.
Just a little.
I know.
So I will build on some of the things that everyone said. But specifically, I'll pick up Anita's first in the discussion about appointing a best, a past board member and the amount of interest. So we don't have a whole bunch of past board members to choose from. So our opportunity to, as our pool is small, I think we do need to prepare for the opportunity that they might say no. They might say yes, but they might say no. And so then I will say that the question, one of the questions is, as we, as Chris mentioned with precedent and we've had, you know, I think when it happened in the past, maybe we were facing a superintendent change. This time we have a pretty big executive leadership change. And so some of that history and that urgency with new administrators, we just need to consider if that's if that's relevant this time, which it sort of feels like it is. And to that extent, if if one of our priorities in this list is having someone that can have a pretty, a less of a learning curve and can hit the ball running, would we appoint, would we consider appointing a past board member and or district committee member or community leader that could still address that learning curve? To that end, we could also then think about, to Anita's question, around the diversity issue. I think again, and and just thinking about, and and I would add diversity to a diversity of skill sets. There's been a number, clearly CN brought a lot of strengths and perspectives to the board and her connection with the medical school and that connection. I do believe that as we start to think about experience, that we should really be thinking about what knowledge or expertise could we have on the board or could we bring into the board that could support our administration? Additionally, you know, finance and, you know, so we think one of our things are, or one of our committees is the CFAC and a group that's been really connected with the board. We've got some people that have a history of our financial history and how the district has gone with a new executive director of business. And finance, supporting our direct, supporting DeeDee with some of that perspective could be good. So I just think that that's something to think about from, yes, you're putting it on the interview applicants, and that's true. But I think it could also go on as appointing a past board member or a committee member too.
You're making me think of something. Nate, can I put you on the spot? And if you don't feel comfortable, I'd be happy to try to summarize what you had said. But we had a conversation that kind of shifted my thinking a little bit about seeing this really as an opportunity. Would you be willing to kind of talk about that in your experience?
Well, I I think, you know, having been in previous districts, it's looking at it and just recognizing, what what is the board need? You know, what are, it goes back to, as Sarah was saying, you know, and thinking about that process. And if you were to consider interviewing candidates and being able to go through, it goes back to kind of what Anita was considering and looking at. And what are the needs? What are those areas that could strengthen the board? And still looking at all the options. I think it's been very clear you have kind of part block and how you'd like to be able to approach this. But if you look at it from a base, a strength-based or needs-based approach, it has an opportunity to be able to also look at from a year out, if you also have somebody who wanted to be considered to run again, that individual with continuity, that's somebody who's a short-term individual and they don't have experience at the board before. Yet they come in, serve one year, and they step down and let another candidate, you know, wide open field. Or is it somebody who might have an interest in considering if they run a year from now? And again, it goes back to the consideration of the continuity component. Not saying that they would be elected because it's obviously always the will of the voters that would make those decisions. But it's just a thing. Did my summarizing our conversation?
Yeah, yeah, I I just remember thinking, yeah, because we really have the opportunity and the responsibility to think of the future of the board, setting up the board and the district and our leaders for success in the future. And that really resonated with me as well. I think we could do that in any of the categories, but it just makes you think about it in a little different way. Yeah. Well, it's, oh, go ahead.
Okay, I I was just gonna say that one other thing which is running through my mind as we think about it is the, how should I say it? The upheaval that is present in the district right now. I think in a lot of cases. And I think it would be incumbent on the board to try to make a selection where we would not exacerbate that issue or that problem. And that whether it's looking at precedent, looking at diversity, but having a strong rationale for this is the person we think for right now would be the most helpful, whether it's a past board member who kind of knows the ropes and has a calming influence in the community many different ways. But I think that we need to be very aware that we don't want to invoke difficulty, more difficulties from our community.
I support what Linda says 110%.
I do too, but I'm not sure what answer that means. What the answer is to that.
Right.
Yeah. A couple of thoughts is that I don't think we're ready to make our decision. Let me propose this and then I'll take feedback. You don't have to do this. How about if we plan on bringing this back again at our September 9th special meeting? And at that point, perhaps I could have had an opportunity to talk with everyone one-on-one so we don't break open meeting law. And maybe by that point, I would be willing to make a recommendation to the board, at least on a process that we'd like to use to move forward. If if in our conversations, we feel like we might be able to agree on a past board member or on a person, it's possible, I guess, we could make that decision quickly. But I just kind of want to still leave it open. It seems like we have more thinking to do. What do people think about that timing and that possible planning?
I mean, I'm not sure about everybody else, but I, I think I feel like I'm in a good spot to say what I. This was a great exercise, doing the pros and cons, having an open conversation to say, you know what, I think this act will be a bit of a, I don't know, maybe.
Should I take the temperature or are people ready?
In in answer to your suggestion, it's very helpful to me to hear other people on the board's points of view. And so the idea that you would talk to each one one-on-one would mean that we would miss that give and take from other people. And so I'm not thrilled about.
Would you rather decide now or?
Well, we're talking about it at another meeting. We could take a temperature now, but it may not be able to decide.
I think the difficult part, Linda, is that we can't really mention names. It would be a lot easier if right now we could throw out all the names we're all thinking. But I don't think we can really do that in open meetings. So therefore, we kind of have to talk about that one-on-one.
Yes.
To not break open meeting law, which is kind of where I was going with that. But but if people feel strongly about one of the processes, we could certainly go around and just kind of see what people are thinking. Okay, go ahead.
Amy first?
I see that. Wait a minute. Why isn't Dr. Anderson first?
Yeah, maybe, maybe let's, yes.
Oh, yeah, it's a bullion.
Yes.
Sure.
Well, I've been listening. Trying to think in terms of what is it that I'm hearing. But, you know, so many great points have been made. I mean, and I always said that the the challenge in decision-making is when there are multiple right answers.
Yes.
And that's what we have here. You know, these are all good approaches. There are approaches that have been used by other districts. And we have very limited past precedent. But a few thoughts that came to mind for me and some of the things that I've been thinking of, and I think reinforced by some of the comments I heard is, you know, either one of the choices or processes or protocols that would allow for somebody who has some experience and knowledge of the district. Right now, with a lot of staff turnover, some pending board turnover could be really helpful to the organization because somebody who can hit the ground running, who knows the players or at least a good number of them, could be an advantage. They know the routines and kind of the protocols for board meetings and work sessions. And there would be less need to get kind of individual up to speed. I think previous candidates and or maybe the previous candidates who have gone on to become very involved and engaged either through committee work or, you know, for any amount of time, whether relatively recently or over a longer period of time. So they kind of know some of the historical perspective of the district through the committee work without necessarily having ever been a school board member. But bringing that perspective and, you know, maybe longevity, living in the, living in the community could be a consideration you might want to think about. Or level of involvement. We all could probably list people, which we're not doing here today, who are involved in everything and are not really a board member and probably be a community member. But are interested parties that would again have some of that good baseline knowledge and being able to hit the ground running. One thing I'm concerned about is that this could potentially be like a longer term because, you know, it could very well be the person they choose to run in November 2022 and be reelected or elected to that position again for only one more year. And then that person, if they want, they might have to do three campaigns in a three-year period if my math is right. So, you know, that could be kind of a a challenging thing. So if for that 12 months, six months of it, as you was just getting up to speed and learning, okay, who's the person that does this again? And what's the role? And tell me more about the committees. It's just a lot of teaching that. It's just a lot of teaching that might get you six months of return on that investment. Because it just, it does take a while. Being a school board member is really hard work. And I know you all know that way better than I do. But it's not one or two or three favorite topics or focus areas that you have a strong interest in. It's all things and representing all constituents in the district. So I think that that makes it kind of a really important thing to think about with the process as well. Nate indicated, and we had some conversation about what does the Board need right now? I think sometimes to think in terms of what are the current happenings either within the district or the community or the state or nationally. And obviously, the pandemic is a huge one. So you might want to think, well, what kind of talent or expertise could be helpful as we continue to navigate that? Another one might be a review of our strategic plan in the coming years. Is there somebody that we've had on the Board before or is a committee member or somebody we have knowledge about that could bring some talent and expertise for that? There's probably another little longer list of those types of things that we would anticipate in the future that we'd want to think about, you know, as you move forward in the selection. Some of the other things I just wrote down that I think are actually what I captured from some things that were said, just having a strong rationale for the person. I think, you know, any approach you choose, any decision you make will be just fine. But just have that rationale and really developing it can be really helpful. Yeah, I think I indicated some familiarity with the word committee work is good. You might want to think about, you know, one of our existing board committees to process this further again somehow. And I don't know if that would make sense or not, but it's just an idea that came to mind. You know, maybe our HR committee is an example because they are in the process of considering candidates and applicants and hiring protocols and placement of staff into positions for a variety of ways. So they may have some natural inclination to understanding protocols. That might be helpful to you as the Chair. So if you have some of our administrative expertise that can maybe help get some of these things through as well. So that was just a random thought that I had. But those are some things that come to mind for me. And again, there's multiple right answers and a lot of good ways to do things like this. I think we have to take a look at. For me, the big one is just the ramp-up time and then the return on that investment for what could literally be 12 or 13, 14 months. I think that's an important thing to think about.
Any comments or questions on all that great information? All right, well, I think, Chris, when you gave your original opinion, was that kind of your, what you're feeling in terms of leaning towards?
Yeah, I am. I mean, a couple of the things that Jason and Nate said did resonate. I mean, you know, are we looking for kind of a short-term patch? And I hate to call it that. Or are we looking for a longer-term investment? And I think unfortunately, sometimes those two ideals are kind of in conflict. Because if you just pick, you know, former board member, ramp-up time is going to be a lot shorter. But you may also be getting somebody who's doing it for the short term for a lot of reasons. And that's pure speculation. And if you contrast that with going back to the last, the 2019 election and you look at the runner-ups, if you will, you know, the investment is there possibly if they're still passionate about it. The ramp-up time, depending on their committee work, if any, they're doing, and I don't know. The ramp-up time could be fairly significant. So I just, I think there's a lot of trade-offs. Where my head's at is I like options one or two. I like to reach out to past board members. And I know we're not naming names. But if you just go back, you know, a half a dozen years, you're looking at six. And we all know who they are. If you look to the 2019 election and you look at the runner-ups, you've got a pool. And they are, whether it's a decision the Board wants to weigh in on, if that's even a possible scenario, they're in both total order, if that's right. So to me, you've got, and these are arbitrary. You go back a half a dozen years with your former school board members, you got six possibilities there. You've got four runner-ups from 2019. You could, that can be construed as a pool of 10. That could be appointed and seated in fairly short order.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Does that also apply to possible leaders in our community who are familiar with the district and maybe have served on communities, committees? Because we could appoint them pretty quickly too, if they wanted to.
I, so I would not rule that out. I do, I like that idea because I think it might be that balance between somebody who's here, who's passionate, who's, you know, been doing CFAC or LAC or whatever for two years. And maybe they're in it for the long haul. But if they didn't run for school board this term, you know, there may be reasons for that. I wouldn't rule that out at all. That becomes tougher in this context because we do have to start naming names at that point. And so, yeah, that's the con there maybe. But I wouldn't rule that out. I like one or two, and I'm certainly open to an appointment that comes within our committee structure. I just wouldn't have to know who it was, obviously.
Linda sounded like you agreed with that, am I right? From what I heard?
Right. I think I lean more toward one than I do two. Just because I think the ability to just join the Board, not have to have a lot of administrative time and board time spent on getting somebody up to speed. It is really important at this particular moment. And also that it would also, we would be able to just talk about the precedent. And so hopefully not get a total uproar about it.
One thing I went out onto that, which I wrote on the bottom and I didn't say, is that if we go with number one, I think we need to be very proactive in having a Plan B. Because given the state of school board work these days, it is possible that those six people might not be interested. In which case, you know, I think it's good to have a pool of community leaders or perhaps number two. Okay, anyone else want to pipe in?
I would totally agree with that.
Yeah.
Nobody would stop and then jump it.
It's just that, okay, so I can weigh in. I guess I'm in agreement that probably one or appointing a community leader that has had extensive work on district-wide committees that maybe has a lot of interest. And, you know, just has never thought going through the election process was maybe the timing was right in their life or whatever. But would be very enthusiastic about serving and possibly then running the next year. It would be easier to run as an incumbent, frankly. So maybe that would be an incentive to a strong leader in our community. I think it kind of depends on what the interest is in either of these pools of people.
Right.
Because if none of the past board members, you know, I mean, I know you mentioned the last, go back six years. Well, we could go back further than that, maybe, to have a wider net. But the further people get always observing, the interest could go down and just the memory, it would take longer to get back up to speed. So which, going with this is really for the quickness of replacing our seventh board member. So I think part of our responsibility as a Board for this district is to try and keep the district running as well as possible. So weighing the strengths of like Nate was saying, employing out our opportunity to fill in any place that maybe we could use a little more strength in certain areas, you know, that's an opportunity. So I just think because of so much going on with COVID, with, you know, whatever, everything that's going on, I think the interview applicants, you know, on the surface sounds like the most democratic thing to do or the most fair thing to do. But when you boil it down, is it the best thing to do for the next 12 months for the functioning of the Board in this district? So that's why I'm leaning really towards appointing a past board member for a very involved community leader that kind of knows the district, knows the players and all of that. So that they can do the work more easily. I guess that's where I'm sitting at the moment.
I would say where I would sit there, I would thank you, I would chase and Nate for, you know, expected. Couple of things that you said really resonated with me. Those things like whatever needs of the Board, I think that's important. And I think it's important to rethink about today and future. That would be important. And I also think something Sarah said when I think about the personal experience. Really, I think really makes a big difference in the Board for today as we're working towards the future. So for me, my head is definitely at the blue leader and the past candidate. I do think the element of diversity which may get in those two pools is going to be significant for us. So I'm too happy for that. So that's where I'm at.
Guys, thank you. So, and so we do have to say, I'll just also un-thwarting that. This feels awkward and it feels a little, it feels especially awkward for me. And it's hard to not look at this from a perspective of being a candidate right now. And I do have to also acknowledge that I think it's really unfortunate. Because I think we have, in our 12 candidates, we have some really qualified people that could, that will and could be very great board members. And we don't have 12 open seats. So I think it's unfortunate about the timing and it's awkward. But that being said, the work of the district is really important. And although MSPA's recommendation about filling it is just a recommendation, we know that it's an informed recommendation and they see an awful lot of vacancies and an awful lot of filling, unfortunately, too many vacancies lately. So I do believe that we need to trust our expert leaders in that timeline. I also believe that our administration has a lot of work in starting the school year and making it successful. And so to the extent that we can be efficient and comprehensive, but focused on this process so that we can get a seventh member on the Board, that seventh voice is important. And so although I think I have thought an awful lot about really thinking that we should wait and push this off until November so we can have those results in that process, I really am not thinking that anymore. And so I think expeditious is important, but thoughtful and informed. To that end, I think that the learning curve is really important and that it does take a lot. I mean, I think it takes years to learn how to be a board member. And I think even after eight, a person is still learning. So I think that anyone, I think having people with experience with the district is important. And I think having someone that can lend a voice. So my vote is looking at, you know, I kind of, I'm looking at the community leader sort of, and I would, and former board member as the first process. Because I think there's a lot of people that may have. But I think that community leader does need to be someone that's had an active involvement with the district. Maybe that's on a committee, maybe that's another thing. Again, this is when we start naming names, but someone that has an intimate knowledge of some of the workings of Board governance. I think if we find that that list to be exhausted or, you know, not as complete, I'm not opposed to looking at former candidates either. Because I do think that we can, that we can make some considerations with former candidates. Again, I would like for us to look at that, thinking about some of our priorities as it relates to the goals and the, so I don't want to say we're going to automatically take the number four, but I don't want to pull that out. And so I just think, again, we need to look at someone that would bring that experience and perspective, you know, from our pool of former candidates. But I would go to community leaders.
So that makes me think of another question, which is, if we do go with either number one or two or looking at community leaders, does that mean we would not be looking at candidates? Or does that mean they would be part of that pool of possible community leaders who are also running?
I feel like all three, I feel like all three categories could make a short list with then we start to look at the frozen clocks.
When you say candidates, you're talking about 2019?
No, I'm talking about candidates right now. The 12 candidates is what I was talking.
Okay.
What, you're shaking your head.
Well, I think, that goes in, I think I'm looking at appointing, I'm looking at option number two, which is appointing past candidates. I would say that current candidates, although again, I'm disappointed that it feels like we, that this timing is happening at that moment. I think for reasons that Chris and Linda and other people have said, including current candidates right now could be really messy. But I think, and I think we're waiting for Jill to find out, even if it's possible.
I just wanted to clarify that. Okay. Does anybody else have any other thoughts? Anyone back there with anything else we haven't discussed? Okay. So it sounds like, you know, we're at the point where we want to start naming names. And so it seems like the best process to do that would be to follow up after this meeting and probably reach out to some people to see if they're interested. Does everyone feel comfortable with that kind of ambiguous process moving forward?
Madam Chair, what about Dr. Anderson's? In the interim, it seems as if there's a HR committee meeting next week. What if, you know, you would make connections with board members? And what about this process of either of HR being a committee where this would get, where maybe some of the not necessarily, any clearly no decisions or anything, but additional processes or thinking of sort of screening questions or the, or the, you know, just sort of that process? Would HR, is Dr. Anderson's, like, be the thought? Or is there, or would it be the Chair and the Vice Chair in conjunction with Dr. Anderson and Nate? Or who maybe does the non-quorum work of this process in between them?
That is a question.
My point would be, I mean, I think the HR committee could certainly look at things and maybe listen to them. And if you land, we could talk to each board member, maybe to get more specifics. But my hope would be, I mean, if we're allowed, that before any person was asked whether they would consider it, that each board member would know who that person is.
Yes, yes, of course, of course.
We wouldn't have a committee that's sort of asking without every board member being part of that saying, yeah, that's okay, it'll be your, I really don't want that.
They agree for the record. We won't ask anyone until we have full board consensus. And that means you too, Dr. Anderson. So, yeah, I think that sounds like a reasonable plan. I can reach out to board members or you can reach out to me. Enough so that we have enough information to talk out about at the HR meeting, which falls before the September 9th special meeting. So are people comfortable with that? I know it's not super concise, but it gives us a place to start. And as questions come up, we can just continue to, you can reach out to the, or Chase.
So first thing, check in with the HR committee?
Well, I think I would rather check in with each of you first to maybe talk about names and ideas. And the HR committee could talk about it. And then we bring back that information to you on the 9th. So what do you think? Is that okay with everyone? Chris?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's fine. And I also compliment whoever put this meeting together because this is a really layered and nuanced discussion. And I think it was handled really, really well. So thanks.
Okay, well, we do have officially the most important meeting of the whole year happening next. So could I get a motion to adjourn? I wasn't there, please say hi. Any opposed? Here he is. We are adjourned.